Ready?
Ready.
Ready to go. Let's call the workshop to order. Mr. Fober, give all the occasion time into...
Mr. Chairman, we have Ms. Brittany Ward here who's going to present the summary of her work, since you allowed us to hire her to try to consolidate all of our ordinances and make it a little bit more streamlined with regard to code enforcement. Please.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
So I know we've already had one workshop on this and there were some comments and suggestions made, so I worked with County Attorney, Mr. David Tetter, and we've made some of the edits and suggestions taken from that workshop. Specifically, you'll see in the amended ordinance, we went back and we've actually included all the definitions. That's more of a procedural edit than it is anything else, so that it's clear on the definitions in their entirety and what those terms mean. There was a specific change to the definition of official. We added some additional verbiage there, so I will read it in its entirety so everybody can see it. It does say, "Whenever reference is made to any officer or official, the reference will be taken to be such officer or official of Jasper County," and this is the edited part, "to include who the county administrator has provided authority to in order to administer the Jasper County Code and ensure compliance." That authority will be given by the county council in the form of ordinance to actually officiate the code enforcement officer, and that person would be presented to you by the county administrator. Any questions in terms of the definitions that have been included? All right, moving on. We've also amended Section 1A, excuse me, 18b2. That section actually references a summons ordinance. That is the citation that would be issued by the code enforcement officer or the law enforcement officer or other official with said authority. That is not related to administrative citation. It is actually the summons that would be issued for magistrate hearing. But we found it necessary because it was part of the code that was, I'll say, not sufficient in its terms, so I wanted to make sure and correct that as we were going through this. Any questions? Please interrupt me at any time if there's something else that you have. I'm just going through the edits and then we can kind of go back and anything we haven't addressed, we can at that point. The only other changes we made actually were going through it and finalizing the grammatical aspect of this in terms of capitalization of fire chief and other terms that have been identified throughout. Do we have any other questions as far as administrative citations go?
Yes, I guess I...I don't know if it's just a generally across the board or...when you have something, it says, "If strictly..."something next. I have to move here. Excuse me, why?
Right.
It says that we can...they can change because of something that's a hardship, a great hardship. I can't...I don't add it just in my notes with a hardship. How does that work?
What section are you in?
I'm not in a section. I'm just on my notes.
Okay.
It states that if there's...we can...they can protest through a hardship, for hardship.
I believe...you're talking about the ones an administrative citation has been issued, one of the remediations is coming back and protesting it due to a hardship. That would be at the discretion of the hearing officer, but if an individual, let's just say they were issued a citation, they...this is a hypothetical. They then told the officer, "I'm working on it. And I have a couple days." They went through that couple day period, which is in here, and they have the ability to work with the citizen, which is the whole point of this. If then a second citation was written and the citizen wanted to protest it, one of the, I guess, reasons for the protest that could come forward would be a hardship, meaning I don't have the money. I would love to remediate this, but I simply cannot financially do it. That would, to me, be a hardship that they could bring forward to be heard as part of that. At that time, again, the whole purpose of this is to get compliance, so at that point, are there programs within the county that they could help them with? Are there other aspects of this that could be remediated to solve the issue? So that, to me, financial hardship is the big one.
Yeah, but with me having a background in this, it is something with a remediation plan to be. There are folks that don't have the means or anything necessary to alleviate the problems, and having something in writing with a remediation plan that gives reasonable accommodations to help someone, it does...it does usually work, but whenever you get to the end of that, that's when things get a little difficult, whenever they're not able to do that.
And just another one off the top of my head, if there was a death in the family, you know, if they had three or four days to remediate something and they came forward and said, "I still plan on doing this, and this is my path forward," but we had a death in the family, to me, that would potentially be another thing that could come forward. Again, these are just examples, not an exhaustive list.
So who does...who makes that determination?
So it would have to go through the protest process, and the county administrator would appoint the protest hearing officer.
That's enough. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't the officer...
No, sir.
...making this decision based on something that, you know, is out there. It has to be a separate location.
Correct.
Separate.
Separate individual that is unrelated to the officer, meaning it cannot be their advising official in their capacity.
Okay, I have other questions, but I don't know if you're going to answer them.
No, go ahead. This is the...why do you came here? For this workshop, the questions could be answered.
Just a clarification on the citation penalties.
Okay.
In addition to the $100 for the first infraction, $250 for the second infraction within one year of the first. Could you explain a little bit more in detail what that means?
Yes, sir. So throughout the ordinance, each violation can occur every 24 hours. We went over that last time as far as one of summer frequent period, but the fees would only be applied one year from each other, meaning if you got a citation, and I'll use littering, so you've got a fine for littering one day on July 1st. The second infraction didn't occur until June 1st of the following year, that would be that $250. But if on second hypothetical situation, if the first one is provided on July 1st and they didn't receive a second violation until August 1st of the following year, that would be back to the $100 fee.
Okay, so, but the $100 for the first infraction means $100 per day goes $100, $100 for...
No, sir. So if you had a violation on July 1st and then again on July 15th, that second one on July 15th would be the $250 fee.
Okay. When...in the process, reasons for protest can be that the code was incorrectly interpreted, required strict application. Doesn't some of that open up to automatic protest?
And I apologize, sir. I don't think I heard the question.
Well, it's going back to the other thing about the undue hardship and the other things. Undue says, "Can be code was incorrectly interpreted and provisions do not apply," meaning you go there and the person that sees the infraction says, "It needs to be three inches," and actually it was two and a half inches or whatever. It's close enough diameter. Doesn't that automatically open the protest all...every one we get? And that's just a...just a question, really, not a...
So I would say that the...the affiliate in a protest to say that the code was inaccurately or incorrectly applied would mean, off the top of my head, that the individual was issued citation for littering, but in fact, it wasn't what should have been a littering charge. It should have been trespassing.
Right.
That would be where that code section actually applies because the protest is that, I agree, something went wrong, but it wasn't that.
Does that protest say to correct it or would be, it throws it out, period?
It could be. I would say that in that situation, that I would advise and recommend that a new citation be written for the more accurate code section violation.
Because our code...our code enforcement is probably our biggest problem in this county, and we have to be fair, and sometimes when I read this, it's left open to too much interpretation. And I guess you can't really drill down much. You want to leave it open, but when you have something that has sand clearance, as I call it, things happen, you know?
And I think we just have an evaluating in that manner. Again, I keep repeating myself, so I hate to do that, but it is the purpose of it. The administrative citation is to work with the citizens, so if there has in fact been a misapplication of the code or a violation has been misinterpreted or misapplied, I think that actually is the purpose of this administrative citation because at the end of the day, as I told staff in a lot of our meetings, you've got the person to come in and talk to you, nothing else, so let's talk through it. And, okay, we admit that maybe something had gone wrong or was improperly applied, but now that you're here, let's talk about how to resolve the issue.
One thing that, depending on what your citing is, the code reference of this county ordinance is, or you use international codes or whatever, like the international codes, they go to a board of appeals for their...who they go to kind of protest to. Is that something that we've established as a board of appeals countywide to have those folks to they can appeal it to?
I'd have to defer the county attorney as far as what other mechanisms are out there for the specific building codes in those sections when those types of citations are written, as far as the administrative citation specifically.
Because if it's county ordinance is one thing, but if you're using other reference codes, then it kind of establishes the board of appeals and processes there.
Correct.
If I'm not...if I'm remembering correctly, and there's multiple business...building codes out there, most of them provide for a construction board of appeals or something similar to that.
Correct.
If I recall correctly, ours reuses a zoning board of appeals as a construction board...as a construction board of appeals at this time. It can always be changed to something more sophisticated down the line, but that's our present default, goes to CBLA.
And if they need the criteria set forth in the whatever discipline, you can use that if you've got some person that has the criteria set forth. You can have one board that does all if you choose to, if they're disciplined in those things.
I think it's the assessor board of appeal. The assessors board of appeal is the construction. I'll have to look at that. I don't recall. It's been... We just did the ordinance and the assessor board of appeal has somebody from construction, electricity, and all that stuff, so it's more of a building.
It's also time for us to look at that again because I think we have some LRR regulations that are...the updates are coming out and it's time for us to readopt, so it's an opportune time to go back and look at those again.
It should be January of this upcoming year.
Which is going to be here on us before you know it.
Absolutely.
And I would also say, specific to the building codes, if it's a structure that is building up and being constructed in the wrong manner, we have kept all of the original language when it would come to the building codes and evaluating that way, so those have not been amended at this time. And that would be discretionary on the extent and how complex the issues would be in that situation. And I say that because I want to make sure we pointed out that the administrative citation that is written in the code as being presented, that the admin citation is not a requirement. It is a tool, and they're a tool that's to be used at their discretion. So if it was a large commercial building being put up and they are just not following the code in any aspect at all, I would presume at that point that building code enforcement would use other methods to ensure the safety of the structure going up.
Do you have...yeah, I don't have any questions. You have all of them. Okay, thanks a lot. You know, we bring up, is this covered, and this may be a question, I don't know, maybe it's not a good question, but does this include building?
Building.
Building inspections? Or is that covered on someplace else?
There is a section in the building codes that does allow for the administrative citation, but again, it's at discretion of the enforcing officer whether or not this is the right way to go about it. I would say off the top of my head, if somebody is going to be putting up a shed in comparison to, like I said before, a commercial building, I think those are two...I don't think anybody's going to argue, but those are two different structures. One is going to have a heavy amount of population in and out of them, in the commercial building, whereas a shed in somebody's backyard is more than likely being used for storage, so that would be at the discretion of the code enforcement officer to use whatever methods he thinks are appropriate at that time.
And they should be going by the Southern Building Code or something like that.
It's the adopted...
Exactly.
...that they're going.
So that's what covers the difference from shed to commercial to residential to...yeah. My problem is, it's just, and I know it's just inherent, but it's too loose. I don't know how you drill it down or anything like that, but it just seems to be, you know, we go in there and we have...we go in and we have to have a...it's a building, then we have to make a decision and go back and forth, and this could go back and forth forever. I mean, how...can we clear this up or can we really...do we, as a county, have to make sure that we separate code enforcement from building? And, you know, because what happens, let's say, somebody calls up and the building, a code enforcement goes out. He says, "Oh, no, it's building." Building goes out and says, "Oh, no, that's not me. That's code enforcement." I mean, how does that...does this...
Well, if it has a permit for it, if they pulled the permit, it would be under the building codes, through the county or through the municipality, through the building. So if you have that mix-up, unless somebody was building something, how did you 10 buck to on their own, then I would think the ordinance, whoever it would be who out there to see it, would then turn it to the building codes.
The actual construction side is easy, isn't it? There are the structures, the unsafe, unsanitary conditions that gets where you run into those things, and you can...I think we have adopted the property maintenance code, and we can use that as an enforcement mechanism also for the county, and it, I think the property maintenance code, it gives you the spellout timelines, I believe it's 20 days after your first contact or contact, and in chapter one, it kind of specifies all of those things. So we do have written procedure to kind of help there, but I will tell you that education before enforcement helps a lot when you go out. There's a lot of folks that just don't know. We do have a rural landscape where folks just kind of do what they want to do until they get caught, and it's one of those things, but we do have a platform to, you know, our enforcement mechanisms to have these things. We just have to look at those to help us, guide us along, but there's other things along the way that doesn't follow in those when it comes to livestock, when it comes to animals, when it comes to vehicles and other things. We just have to look at the county ordinance level to help us out with, but again, education before enforcement, and if we write our enforcement mechanisms to kind of mirror some of those others, it does help us a long way. It kind of keeps it consistent across the board.
Yeah, and for instance, I had a conversation with somebody who was building onto a shed who's going to make it a business. I called Chief Wells. We shut it down, and Chief Wells, if you can...so what happened there? You made a phone call and went to the building department and...
I went to him.
Okay. So there you go.
You shut it down.
So that's kind of the place, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add a couple things. In our workshops that we have, administratively workshops, we've recognized the need that we need to have interdepartmental communications, number one, so that if there's a multi-jurisdictional problem in a site, that everybody can at least check on what everybody's doing with each other. So we, first of all, fixing everything needs to be fixed, number two, not giving mixed signals to the citizen or builder or whomever it might be, landowner. So we're focused, after we get this, into, let's administratively figure out how do we create a digitized system so we can follow us going home with any particular matter, because often it is interjurisdiction. Fire marshal has certain things, the electrical code has certain things that need to be looked at, so trying to get everybody involved in fixing the issue out there. And the other thing to make certainly understand is if it's an egregious offense, you don't have to give an administrative citation.
Correct.
You can go straight to the hammer...
Correct.
...when necessary.
And adding on to, Mr. Tetter was just saying, I struggle, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe he even requested for a code enforcement manager. I'm not sure what the title was going to be, but that individual's position would be to kind of oversee the program in its entirety and figure out exactly how administratively and organization-wise it would work, to take that under their belt and say, "Okay, how are we actually going to move forward and make sure that we are having communication?" I believe there's a program out there that they were looking at to implement and organize the communication that you were just speaking of.
Yeah, I think we're clear with that.
Yeah, I respect your suggestion.
With the new budget this year, I can't remember what the title is, but it's kind of a coordinator that kind of...
Yes.
...gets everybody on the same page.
I apologize. I don't know what the title was, but in addition, the vice chair was just speaking about education. That was another item we talked about in our administrative workshops, was this is an opportunity to implement something new and use it as a, I hate to say reason, but a reason to communicate even further with the citizens, explain to them the new system and educate them on how it's implemented and what things you should be doing and who to call if you do have a question about something. So an education program should definitely be set forward. I would highly recommend that because it is a great opportunity to be able to reach out to the citizens and say, "We have this new system put in place and we're trying to work with you. It's a new way to communicate. Let's work together."
So what you're saying is the supervisor that's being hired, well, I think it's the supervisor, whatever the title is, he's going to be the key that everybody kind of, not reports to, but flows the paperwork.
That was my recommendation.
This creates a lot of paperwork. For example, you go in there into a building and they're building it, they have a permit, right? And they go in and they're doing, but can that person, that building inspector, they find somebody that's code enforcement, can he also do administrative?
Yes.
Can be anybody?
That's the idea, is to have as many people as you can having an additional duty and being aware and eyes on them when they're out in the field, and have this new person that you talked about be sort of the generalist, who keeps track of all that, reports it, make sure everybody's communicating correctly, continuing to tick away a queue of issues and reporting on it, which is very important to see what the results are.
And I also thought communicated in our workshops that there was the lack of communication or I guess the workflows and communication between different departments creates duplicate efforts, meaning you go out to a site because of one complaint and then another department gets called two, three days, two weeks, whatever it is later. Do they know about the other complaint that was already discussed? You know? So I think it would be really efficient to have somebody in that position that can sit back, take in all the information, and so it's in one place. So if you do get a call two, three weeks later, you already know that, okay, we've had these issues in the past, what, one, what has worked in the past to help this individual come into compliance? What was the method used then? And two, is this a repeat offender and what are we going to do about it?
Yes. So it's, our administrator said, "A lot of this is complaint-driven," and of course, we all get complaints, and I don't know the validity of it. One of them that I keep getting over and over is the possibility there of homeless that do not have such things or are not permitted throughout the county, cannot say yes or no. But what would be the flow for someone if they wanted to make that complaint? Where would we expect them to go to make the complaint? And in that scenario, is there any changes being recommended to the ordinance to change anything, even something like that?
Do you want to answer the administrative side of the question?
Sure. I think you can answer. There probably are no changes.
There's no changes to the ordinance at the moment.
How the complaint may come in and be processed may be a little bit differently. I think going to that new generalist who would route it appropriately and be able to produce some data, we're going to do that with our data analyst down there, Ms. Tisha, who does all of our monthly reports, and so they're going to be able to, she's going to be able to track that and see how many instances you have of that, how they've been resolved, all that kind of thing. So you'll be able to see them annually. Have you reduced some of those? Have you received an uptick in certain types? Do we have spikes at different times of the year, certain code violations, all those kinds of things?
Is there a way that our team may be able to create like a code enforcement violation tab on the website where folks can report that, put the information in, it blasts it out to all that code enforcement person, and the generalist can filter it to whoever...
Yes, sir.
...to where it can get out. But those that are not tech savvy have a number to be able to reach out to someone because there's still a lot of old-fashioned people that like to pick up a telephone and hear somebody on the other hand.
Yes, sir, and our ten is, when we get this person on board, is you, just what you talked about. Go ahead.
There is one on the website?
There is a form that you can digitally submit off of the county's website.
Is it user-friendly and does it work?
Yes, sir. Do you have internet?
Can you find it?
Yes.
The vice chair and Ralph, as part of that, the education campaign that Ms. Ward talked about, we have Ms. Heather Raff and our individual person who works with HR, ready to meet and talk about that because we intend to put out, we've talked with staff about that, put out some press about the information you're receiving from the public about these pop-up developments, those kinds of things, push out some of that stuff on social media and in the printed press to let everyone know of the issues that you're working on, what you're seeing, what you're trying to do to combat it, that kind of thing, ahead of time, so that everybody would know that, and as part of that, we would put in there how they can report such incidents.
Right, and like I said, it's, our website's not the easiest to navigate, so anything that can stand out where they can click a button and there's some predetermined fields that people can fill in versus send an email, just makes things a lot more user-friendly.
Absolutely.
Okay.
There is a form here.
It's on, it's on different...it's on there. Jason. It's on, it's on a different, it's on JCES. We'll get it fixed.
If you could now just go up a little bit, I just want to see the address. There it is, code enforcement, okay. And who does the 843-547-8209 go to?
Both of those come directly to me, sir. And then I give it to our other officer as we give complaints in.
And who does the code enforcement email go to?
That comes to me as well. I get it both mobile, on mobile phone, to iPad, and then obviously on, it's hard to dial.
And I think there's a way that IT can route that to building, fire, code enforcement, all of the above, where everybody can be in that fax email, where everybody gets it. If it's code enforcement or fire or building department appropriate, everybody gets it that way, it's not relying on forwarded emails and things like that.
I think if we move forward with the code enforcement coordinator.
Right.
That would be part of that list or distro, and then if we get the appropriate software that will empower the workflow process, that will help us. So if you come in, you apply for a zoning certificate permit process to move into the building, building permits and things like that, that workflow process, we move through the software, it creates certain triggers to all of the other operational divisions that will help us navigate that and inhibit a lot of the things that take time to discover.
So we're going to have, we're going to be able to put on the website a digital information thing?
The software that we had looked at was Citizen, Sir? Citizen, Sir?
That was the old, yeah, and then, but the one we just looked at that's part of Tyler Software, which is what they currently use, is, well, there's a couple, what I've got is one of them, like within that Tyler Software that the county is currently using.
Does our existing software have something like that? I know we have software, the software we have has inventories and has all this stuff, I don't know if you do or not, but does this have a component that we could hook into? So it's system-wide, rather than creating another system, another system?
There were some modules, the evaluation team.
It does have some, but it's not as full feature. It's, they're owned by the same company. It has some more internal aspects of it for the modules that we have, and what they're looking at is more of a citizen front, what the citizen would see as well. So I think the current modules and then this new module or software that can integrate with it would be able to be more full-featured.
Well, the more we automate, the quicker we get things done. And code enforcement is, just by us holding a workshop on this and having somebody come in and do something, code enforcement is important, and we've said that from the very beginning, because we can do, we can spend a lot of time, a lot of money, on doing all these ordinances and all this, but if we don't protect them or we don't follow them or we don't have somebody to say, okay, they're being done.
Or following up with them. That's the big complaint that I get, is folks trying to reach out and nobody from code enforcement reaches back out to them.
Sir, we had two people that were covering 654 square miles.
Right.
Tell you, maybe I don't want to.
Not, that wasn't a contempt, that's all we're trying to do is say, we understand.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that, just wanted to clarify that.
Well, we understand that.
Thank you.
And I highly recommend it, I applaud the administrator for bringing forward the coordinator, whatever the title is. I really think that's a huge step in the right direction, like allowing him to have other tools, or he or she have other tools, to reach out and have a communication and be able to have the organization put in place for the application of these ordinances, regardless of it's admin citations or anything. I think having an individual at the head to be able to organize that and implement these things is a huge step in the right direction.
What would be, we used to talk about education, the education is essentially giving them a certificate, say, come here and talk to us, that's the education, or...
They hire Heather Raff, I believe, if there's a constitution.
Yeah, we're going to do a public outreach push on this issue, so that everyone understands what issues you're facing, what you're seeing, what your constituents are telling you are code enforcement issues, why they're occurring, the challenge, that you're going to need the community's help, that you have two people. Give them some guidance on how they report on it.
And I know we had brought some ideas around and obviously not taking away from Heather or the staff, I know we had talked about simple things like when a notice goes out for your business license renewal, add something in there that just says, hey, by the way, we have this new system put in place, if you ever have any issues or concerns, here's the website address, here, there's so many opportunities that you already communicate with the public, to take advantage of those, to use them as information gateways, you're already telling them something, you're already reaching out to them. So that's a huge opportunity to just put it out there. Eventually, somebody, if they have a problem, they're going to say, I do remember hearing that or seeing that somewhere, you know? You get a tax bill, you get, and how many times has the county reached out to citizens already? And it's just taking advantage of those opportunities, and I think that's why they brought the consultant along to do this kind of thing.
As the chief said, that's, that's the reality of dealing with a very leading staff, is that you, your voicemails back up, your emails, you get 100 a day, and by the time you get to someone to answer them that that's not a code enforcement issue, or that's not your jurisdiction, or there's somewhere else that could go, they're wasting their time and not doing the actual work. So that's what the coordinator hopefully can do, coordinator can sift through some of that, take that load off, be more responsive to the public, but also get to the problems and get them working on the problems versus all the secretarial type of stuff.
Well, Kim, at the beginning of my, and you had a very good idea. Yes, Kim? Don't be so surprised. But she had, I think we had a problem with something, and she created pamphlet, I think it was at Apex or something. You did something.
We had a brochure yesterday.
Excuse me?
We do, we have a pamphlet.
Right, a pamphlet, that gives it out. I think we've got to do more of that because we can have Heather Roth come in here and do a blast or do that, but it goes away, we forget about it. But if you have a pamphlet, you can...
Yes, sir, part of that will be creating talking points for you, when you go out and talk, that you can give the people the same information so that everybody's hearing the same thing.
Because we started, we've started going to workshop, Town Ball's there. So, you know, this is information, it's like a sponge out there, they want more information than we can give them right now, so...
And again, I think repetitiveness is going to be key, you know, continuing that, like you just referenced, continuing that education, continuing to communicate is when people start remembering things.
Well, do we have any other questions? Do we have any other questions? No, sir. I'm just going to say, personally, and I think we've all said, code enforcement is probably the biggest thing we can do in this county to mitigate that. Because we hear all these complaints, we hear everything going on, and I live in fear, I live in fear, it's more the time we're not going to be able to catch something, somebody's going to get hurt and die. And I say, why? We could, it can, just go down to, the floods down in Texas, right? Why? They probably were working their butts off, but why? There's always that next step. But anyway, I thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, John.
Just one more question.
Yes, sir.
When you did this, did you take this from some other location or you based it on some other location?
Administrative citations, to my knowledge, Pefter County, we did have it then when I was employed, Animal Control Services did take on administrative citations, I know Mr. Tutter, and I spoke about it at length. So we worked together to draft the majority of this. And there have been other municipalities that have been taking on the same idea, and we have had great success and I guess feedback from those areas as well.
Could you find a chance to get us one of the municipalities that we can talk to?
It was recently put in the public in the paper that Town Hillhead has implemented, the Town Hillhead has recently adopted administrative citations for parts of their code enforcement as well. They have not adopted it in its entirety. I believe that Island Packet did an article on short-term rentals, and it's my understanding, there was pretty positive feedback from the public on it.
A lot of negative feedback, too.
You'll have some of both, I guess, in everything you do, right?
It never goes easy, it never goes easy, so, anyway, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other high-level changes we need, I know we're going in our first reading of this tonight, is there any other thing that we need to be aware of?
I don't believe we've had any other substantial changes since our workshop that we went through it pretty ended up. David, do you?
The only thing that we mentioned, Mr. Van Gies, maybe two meetings ago, we were looking at animal control, our present state of animal control ordinances and things there. Developments that are ongoing may raise an opportunity for us to, just more in the same way.
I was going to talk about that tonight.
Yes, and Brittany and some others up there talking to are familiar with Hong Kong, state of the art, the state of animal ordinances across our region. So we kind of know what's going on, where people are heading with different aspects of animal control, speed and neutering in housing, health and safety aspects of some of the animal control.
Well, I hope to have them on there in a couple weeks, actually. I kind of like with that animal control, that with speed and neutering, try to get that program going and...
Oh, that's going to be a must.
Yeah, I know, and other things like, really, as long as thinking outside the box, rather than accepting an animal, we can get them and say, hey, what are you, why are you giving us the animal? And make it food, or is it just something that's short-term? You know, we can help that way, and it's really cheaper than going on. I think we have to think outside the box all the time.
Yeah, there's a lot of things, there's chipping of dogs, there's the issue we have with hunting dogs that come into our area and get let loose. There's a lot of things that we have, and a lot of, like Future County's just doing their animal ordinances right now, I think they're getting ready to have their third breed.
They're breeding, yes, sir.
Right. So I'd like to adopt a lot of those, but we got to modify a couple of them, I've been working with Tallulah and Franny, and so hopefully we'll have that wrapped up here pretty soon, because we have a little different situation in Future County, but I'd like to ride the coattails because they've worked hard on it.
Absolutely.
And they've done a good job with it, so, I think, I mean, there's a lot we need to have, you know, if you're going to breed dogs, you need to register as a breeder, you know, there's going to be a lot of things in there that hopefully we can get past and push through, so...
And all goes back to code enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we're in an epidemic situation right now with animals.
Well, I can say Tallulah and Franny are extremely dedicated and have put a significant amount of time and energy and heart into creating what the Pefter County has today, and I can applaud them enough for all their efforts, so...
Thank you, they're good people.
Absolutely, so...
So, that is the...
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rover, do you have anything to say about this, or...
No, sir, I don't have anything additional. Of course, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
It's really, to me, we have to get that person hired and go from there, that's where you got to start, go full speed ahead and get this ordinance going.
Yes, sir.
I believe, I think this is a different way of working, I think, from what we did before, we had the Sheriff's Department out there, that was almost a threat, and I, no offense, no offense, but, you know, if we get that there, we say, look, we want to be partners, we want to make sure everything's okay, that's our thing, so...
We try to pivot when you tell us to, when we know that your community needs something, and we try to not spend much money in doing so, and I think this is another example of that.
And I think if we get the new person, we'll be able to find what's going on.
Yes, sir.
So, no other items, or, I'm sorry, you put on general discussion, we can't do that, so, we have 15 minutes until we start the meeting. I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, raise it right now.
Aye.
Any negative? Hearing none, motion is passed. See you at 6 o'clock. Thank you.